Mr. Mayor, it's 4:00 PM. You have the meeting. Need to, you have to unmute yourself, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You probably wish I would have stayed muted. I'd like to call the Special City Council Workshop to order for April 30th, 2020. Have you taken attendance?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Furplank? Furplank?
She's muted.
Sorry.
Well, President accounted for. You're probably wondering how we staged this massive water event that coincided with our meeting tonight to talk about long-term fixes for the for our waterfront. We're experiencing some serious flooding issues, at least what I see here at East Shore, much worse than what we had last Thanksgiving, and that was bad. My, in my tour this morning to take a look at what was happening on Water Street, I was a bit encouraged in that this time around, there was, we had strategies based on things that we had done since the last event, and people were putting things into place. So at River Market, for example, Jim had stacked up sandbags and he didn't get water in the building. I know Eric was working on that as well. I think you did have water in the building, but it wasn't as bad as it could have been if we weren't sort of prepared and thinking ahead. I saw Steve Phelps at the Butler, and you guys put sandbags in place so the water really didn't breach your basement this time, as I understand it. So anyway, I think we're making progress. The purpose of the meeting today is to go down the list of suggestions for mitigation and find the most cost-effective strategies that we can to take care of all of the areas that are at risk here. So with that, we'll open this up for public comment. If you wish to make a comment, you can signal me by pressing your hand raised button, or you can frantically wave and say, "Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak." If you want to speak, please hold your comments to three minutes, and we'll take it from there. Anybody wish to speak?
Yeah.
I see you, David.
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I didn't see the hand. Yeah, the, just figured out how to get the auto running, so I didn't hear the introductions. So this is all about the flooding on the corner by Mill Pond, that most of this is about?
Well, this is about the flooding of the entire waterfront here.
Oh, yeah.
We've had studies and strategies suggested, and the purpose of this meeting is to pick strategies to move forward.
Right. Yeah. I was just thinking that if we had series of pumps, which, I mean, you you have to have so many, so many pumps, running 24 hours a day, and you have, the only way to make that useful would be to combine it with a levee system. And that's the only way to keep the water out of the town, is a levee system and pumping, and I can't, I don't know where the money's going to come for for that. It just seems like that's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of problems. I don't know what else, what else there could be done. I mean, it's like, I think of it as like Bill's pump system in a boat. It's like the water comes in, and you pump it out, it comes in, you pump it out, it comes in, you pump it out, but you gotta pump 24 hours a day to, faster than it comes in, to really make a difference. And I don't know what anybody has ideas. I don't know. I'm not a hydraulic engineer, so I don't know how that would work, but it seems like the only way to prevent water from coming in, to slow it down, is is either a series of sandbags, which is like six, six feet wide and about four feet tall along it, the small amounts of bags that they got in front of of, oh, what places along, a long, couple places along, along the water, isn't enough. It's just, really isn't enough to prevent the water coming back. It's gotta be a much more robust system of sandbagging to do any good, and then you have to combine that with, with continuous pumping to push the water back out again. But you don't, the only way to run it all the time. So, anyway, that's just, just some comments. I'll just, I'll stop now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Any other comments? Dan Fox?
Yeah, I, having listened to the discussion in the last meeting, maybe the last two meetings, with the consultant's report that included what I would call short, short-term remediation, the HESCO bags and so on and so forth, and the pumps, and what have you, at relatively lower cost, and then significantly higher costs, more, if you will, permanent capital, more tech capital intensive projects, aiming for quote-unquote "a longer-term solution." My only question is whether, if you go to that second level of what I would characterize as more dramatic and obviously expensive activities to quote-unquote "solve the problem," whether you might also not want to consider funding that by way of a special assessment district along the riverfront, since vast majority of those properties are private properties, and the benefit of this, while there is benefit certainly to the community, there's also a specific benefit to those, to those real estate properties. At least, it's something that ought to be considered. So, that's my only comment, other than to say I like Barry Johnson's background. It's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Kirk.
Any other comments to be had? Kirk, do you see any files up?
I do not see any. Oh wait, I think Diana Decker has, looks like she maybe has some comments.
Diana? You'll have to unmute yourself. There we go. You're kind of weak.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Just regarding East Shore, I mean, I used to own a condo there many years ago, and it's just very sad what I, what I saw this morning. Is there any way that, because you're in the flood insurance, if, on your insurance company with Garner Management, if you could check with them on the insurance with the damage, if they could assist?
Yeah, believe me, we have, and we, we don't make a lot unless you get some real damage to the buildings, which fortunately hasn't happened yet.
There isn't damage in the garages with the wood and everything?
You know, not so far. I mean, we got water there, but it goes out, and so.
But not being able to get to your place, into your residence, back and forth, is, that's nothing for the insurance in Garner to investigate?
Well, we shouldn't, let's get into this conversation on the side. I don't want to take the whole meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else wishing to make a comment? All right, then we'll move on to this discussion item of the day, downtown riverfront high water report. Kirk, do you want to do a preface here for the discussion?
Yep, I sure would. Well, the city council received the report from Edgewater and talked that through at the last regular council meeting. The council did make a motion at that meeting to implement a strategy in relation to water in Lucy Street, and the Public Works Superintendent Scott Herbert and our engineer John Moxie have already started on that process. The council wanted to have a special workshop to really kind of get into the meat of the report more, and talk about some other ideas and options to implement. So we, we put this meeting together, and in the meantime, we've had our planning, one of our planning commission members, Ms. Marcia Casper, was so generous to assist. She, or she worked previously for Consumers Energy, she did a lot of work in terms of prioritizing projects and helping a lot of the decision-makers in that organization come to a consensus. So, we put together, I'd rather say, Ms. Casper put together a really great tool, and we sent that out to council. On Tuesday, council was able to rank the projects and sent them back, and Ms. Casper was able to synthesize that together and put together a final document. So we have that today, and Ms. Casper is on the line, and I was going to allow her to do a screen share here, and what we can do is she can kind of go through that ranking system, if you'd like, with all the answers that the council submitted, and kind of go from there. So I'm going to make her a co-host real quick, so she can share her screen, but if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I think that if you'd like to go through and look at those results, it might be helpful.
That's fine. Go ahead, and thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Can people hear me? Okay. Now, do, uh, yeah, let me click here. Can you guys see my screen?
No.
No, not yet.
Okay, not yet.
I think Kirk has to get out first, in order for you to
I'm going to I'm trying to exit out of here, and it's not letting me do it. So Marcia, are you, are you able to click on the screen share on your tab?
Let me see.
If you click on screen share, the
Is, is it something down below?
Yeah, it's on the, yep.
Oh, share screen, yeah.
Yep. So once you do that, you'll be able to put, put your screen up there.
Share. Okay.
Yeah, I can't, it won't let me exit out of there.
Yeah, we have to give permission, so we have to temporarily go out of the meeting and come back in. It will take, hopefully, two seconds.
Okay.
I had to click that you could screen share, but then you have to quit and come back in.
Okay.
While they're doing that, I took a quick trip downtown just before the meeting started. The water has receded a lot on on Water Street. It's almost back to the corner now, the corner of Lucy and Water.
Okay. Kirk, we're back in, but it says that the host now has to enable screen sharing.
Yep, I will do that right now. How about that?
Okay, now I'm gonna share screen.
Perfect.
Okay, now, people can see that. It says flood location ranking at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, just as Kirk had mentioned, I have over like 20 years of experience at Consumers and helping decision-makers in either cost-benefit analysis and prioritization. And so, when this came up, is what else am I gonna do? As I'm locked in the house, so I offered to help do an evaluation. The first thing that I wanted to go to here on the analysis tab down here, is just go over some of the key assumptions. And this actually kind of, kind of touches on what, what Dan had mentioned. The evaluation is done on, you know, assuming kind of that this is a short-term issue. Again, there could, if we think this is a longer term, you can spend a lot more capital, and the analysis would get more complex and more time if we wanted to look at something long-term. The assumption that came out of the Edgewater Resources report is that there would be 12 events per year. The costs that I'm showing in here, again, they're the, the least-cost mitigation option, so they don't get into the 350, 450, half a million dollar projects, capital projects. And then, just wanted to point out that, this was discussed last meeting, the costs for projects two, five, and eight, those are the ones that involve a HESCO barrier and a pump. They have a common, you know, embedded within them, some variable costs, and the Edgewater report said it was based on 12 events a year. So if there's more or less, you know, clearly those costs could go up or down. And then the other thing, the other key thing is that the, these options, the assumption is that the costs are funded by the city of Sagatuck. Again, if we get into some super expensive, more expensive fixes, that, you know, you get into private property, et cetera, that's a whole other issue and another analysis. So those are just some of the key assumptions I wanted to cover. In terms of starting out, Kirk had mentioned, you know, it started with a survey. So I put together this, and it was sent to the seven council members. They were asked to rank on impact, one through five, from no impact to significant impact across seven factors that are shown here against, and those factors against the eight locations. And that was the first step. And then they were also asked to allocate, given that there are seven factors, to allocate 700 points to give more or less weight if, if someone believed that a certain factor should have more weight. And then, based on the individual scores, and we'll get to that on the analysis tab, but you can end up with, you know, an average score, which is, yeah, let me go here on the council. Let me shrink that a little bit. No, that's probably okay. And this is the summary. So again, there's all seven were returned. I had seven raters. I had one that there were some cells that had a zero, and the rank, and the scale was one to five. So I made the zeros ones. And that was in certain cells on one, one of the raters. And anyways, so in terms of the weighting, this is how the average of the seven came out
In red.
in red, and converted it to kind of a percent weighting. So you can see that across the top. Not major differences, I would say, between the weights. And then, these, like, so for City Marina, the City Marina South End of Butler site, the average point score on is traffic affected from the seven is a 1.4. And all of those, actually, I gotta move something out of the way here. So then each of those adds up to total points. This pink column, it's actually column L here, that is if, if all of the weights had the same weighting, so one-seventh or 14.3%, and then this just shows how the, this kind of purplish or darker red column factors in the alterations on the criteria weighting. The next step, so I'm going to use the weighted point totals in the analysis. So these numbers, this 14.6 down to 28.6 for Lucy Street, you'll see transfers over to the analysis tab that I'm showing here. I gotta move something out of my screens view. So here's your 14.6 down to the 28.6. And then again, I, the key assumption is that these were the least cost, you know, that first level of mitigation that came off of the Edgewater report. I added a column if, on the fly, you know, someone had some new updated numbers, so we could add or subtract a cost. So you end up with a total cost, annual cost there. And then, a key number is what I'll call a benefit to, per thousand dollar of cost ratio. And this is just simply the, the total average points based on the council rating divided by the, this least cost option in thousands. So moving to the next, and yeah, you can kind of think of that as the, the best bang, you know, for the buck. Table two, scrolling over. So, if we have a certain pot of money, and from the last council meeting, $20,000 was thrown out as a potential allocation for the flood program. So how do you pick the projects? Well, one way is just, okay, so let's rank them by the, by the weighted points. And so, this is just showing the ranking, and Water Street came out with the, the, it would help the most, you know, the best impact, the greatest impact all the way down to West End, the West End of Mason Street. And so, the costs for each of those projects are simply, you know, you just add them up if your, if your budget is 20,000, and that's what, you draw the line, and until you hit your 20,000. So, this, in this way, in this ranking, we would fund Water Street and Spear Street. A more efficient use of dollars, and this is what we always use or have used, where I used to work at Consumers Energy, is this benefit cost ratio. And so this table three is sorted by column AE here, from highest to lowest, so the highest bang, the greatest bang for the buck. And in this case, what you can see, that what it did is it, it moved the West End Mason Street and Francis Street Road End to the top, and basically because these quote-unquote "solutions" are very, are low cost, and you get a fair amount of impact for that low cost. And again, now if you draw the line, well, you're not, we're not going to be able to hit exactly 20,000, but it just pushed these two above Spear and Water. And so if you wanted to fund 23,400, you would fund these top four. If you had a hard and fast, nope, it's, you know, 20,000's the max, you know, potentially, you you could drop Francis Street, or if, you know, costs came back and we knew one of these other ones was less costly than that, but that's just sort of, that's the summary of what I had put together for this. And then the last thing over here, in column AG and beyond, I just put, like, from the Water or Edgewater report, what these solutions were for these costs. So, this was just a water, water barrier, actually, I think, yeah, I didn't, this should just be the water barrier. This was a water barrier and pump. This was an upgrade. And then these, the assumption is these wouldn't be funded, and so it would just be the current, whatever you're currently doing that's identified in the report. Although we did throw in a caveat, if the restroom isn't available, which, you would need to have one for the public, that there's a possibility of just getting port-a-johns. So, I guess with that
One other thing.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And the other thing to note is that, one, these are one-time, are these one-time or recurring costs, and none of these are long-term fixes. These are all kind of recurring costs. If you did it this year, and flooding happened again next year, you'd have to, that same recurring cost next year.
Yeah, and I have a question, Mark, because I wasn't sure, like, some of these HESCO barriers of can, can they be reused, or is it basically, once you use them for a season, you throw them away, and yet you're gonna have to expend the dollars again, so I guess with that, if I can kick it back to Kirk, or if there's any questions, or?
Do you have any questions, or press your raised hand?
Marcia, I just want to, I just want to say this is an amazing tool. Thank you so much for bringing this type of analysis to us. I found this to be really interesting and helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Hopefully, it won't confound and confuse.
Yep. Hi, thanks, Marcia. This is wonderful. Data is always a good thing. You've presented it in a way that's very understandable, and thanks for walking us through it. It makes good sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Kirk. I asked you earlier to think about the financial end of all this. You know, Marcia was doing an analysis based on $20,000 we have available. Where are we in terms of the city's budget that we can think about how much impact we can buy here?
Well, the, the city council did a budget amendment recently, and, and picked a number about $20,000. And we chose that number after I consulted with John Moxie at F&amp;V to kind of get a, just a, a number that we could put in there. And again, it had no real basis on it. It was just something that we, we estimated to do some sort of flood mitigation. So, that's right now, the council's appropriated $20,000. Now, but obviously, the council can always go in and amend the budget to whatever amount you want, but you know, if you want to, if you're asking the question, how much money does the city have total, you know, you have about 1.9 in the general fund, you got another million committed to the parks, you got 1.7 million in local streets, and another 637 in water and sewer. So, some of those things obviously can't be used for flood mitigation, but you also have the extra road millage, which you would be able to use for some of the stuff for the, that's related to the street, so so I guess I don't know if, you know, if you're saying, well, how much money do we have? I mean, potentially, you, you know, you have you're around 8.5 million if you want to spend every penny. I wouldn't recommend that, obviously, but this current budget year, you've appropriated $20,000. You could do an amendment if you wanted to add that, too, so.
Right, right. But, but I wasn't looking for how much money we had. I was looking for sort of a, a best judgment of how much money we could allocate to this part of our, of our needs without sacrificing, undoing the, all the other things we had to do. Chris, you had your hand up?
I do, and I, again, I'll just echo what everybody else said about Marcia's work here. This is absolutely amazing. And again, I appreciate the fact that she took out those high-end costs, because if we're gonna look at those, then they need to be part of our priority list, I think, and, and be a little more specific on that. What I do, do think is, I know we're getting into the cost of this. Personally, I would prefer, and everybody, maybe we could decide on this, I would prefer we would look at the first one, the points, which I think pertain more to to helping the community than to simply focus on the, the cost, because the Wix Park Marina, the City Marina, to me, those impact people the, the least. And I would really like to go to the, the conditions that she came up with. I would have never thought of all of them. They're just fantastic. And I think when you weigh those in, you get a much better idea of, of what we can do to, to really help ease the burden on businesses and pedestrians and our visitors.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with that approach. I think if, you know, the council, you could do all the work if you wanted to, and it's just a matter of how much you want to spend. So I know what you're, I think I understand what you're after. You're kind of saying, well, what do we have right now in the budget that we could spend that isn't gonna get it and impact anything else, and And I don't have that exact number right now in terms of this fiscal year, but you do, that's why we have a general fund and a reserve. So I think really more importantly is focus on, there might be a better approaches, like Chris said, is focus on, you know, are there really critical projects that you think is going to be the most beneficial? And this is the process of this ranking system. Let's get them ranked and then, then we can go through and we might build, you know, if we look at it and say, well, you can do your top three, you're not going to, you're not going to get into any, get to the bone, so to speak, in this fiscal year. But if you did need to do them all, we obviously, there's, there's money there if you wanted to appropriate it.
Great. Garnet?
Yeah, I, I see that Scott Herbert is on the call. And I know that Scott and I think the gentleman from Edgewater and maybe even Kirk walked around maybe yesterday, I can't remember. But I'm, I'm curious of where Scott's thoughts are as far as this recent high water, which has taken us well above where we were in November. I'd like to hear Scott's thoughts, please.
Sure. Thanks, Garnet. You know, we've looked at the streets quite a bit in the past couple of days and taken numerous photos of all the, the problem areas and the portions of the road or portions of the infrastructure that are letting the water onto the road. And it's really hard to know what to expect moving forward. So, you know, if we have, you know, back by Thanksgiving, we had a storm surge of a foot and a half, two foot. If that happened now, that would be devastating. So I don't, it's, as far as cost goes, I'm, I'm looking at the long-term after this event is over, what the repair costs are going to be to our infrastructure. I'm seeing a lot of, you know, sidewalk where it butts up to the seawall where there's a little bit of cracking. There's some down at Coffin Park. And I know there's, there's a void underneath that side, that concrete. You know, yet alone the base layer of the, of Water Street and the surface coat of asphalt. So I'm concerned about what the repair is going to look like for this. And no one really knows that answer at this point. I'm excited to work with John. I think that him and I are meeting tomorrow. And we're going to go through and see how we can provide better protection based on the motion that council approved last Monday, how we can better protect ourselves against heavy rain or storm surges like this. But at this point, they're, they're fairly rare. I don't think that there is a lot that, you know, with the kind of budget we're talking about here, I don't think there's, we're not going to be able to stop these events from happening. But, but like John and I talked about, we can reduce the impact that these events do have when they occur.
Eric, we do have the same questions during the council part of the discussion.
I'll wait. Sorry.
Okay, I don't want to shut you off either, but if you have a topic you want to, okay.
Happy to wait, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak at this point? So I think what I'm hearing is that we should go through and do a ranking now and see where that list comes out. Chris, is that where you were coming from? You're muted.
That's my suggestion. We do it on the weighted points about how it affects businesses, pedestrians, so on and so forth.
And Mr. Mayor, you, your engineer, John Moxie, is also attending this meeting too. So if you have any specific questions, want to bounce anything off him, he's on the line as well.
I see. Do you have any, anything to say at this point, John? To add to the discussion?
Yeah, I guess first I'll just echo as an engineer, the, the spreadsheet made my heart jump. I, I really appreciate that. That was fun to go through, see the thought behind it. Scott and I are meeting tomorrow, based on kind of the direction from Monday night's meeting, focused mostly on, on the Lucy area. But certainly, you know, we'll, we'll work with whatever budget you want, would like to invest in, in this effort. I will say, and, and just echoing what Scott said, you could, you could exhaust, you know, every resource in the city. And I don't know that I can assure you that we would prevent what happened the last couple of days. There's just going to be certain times that we can't do a whole lot. We're, we're fighting, you know, an unstoppable force. But certainly we can do things to improve that and, and provide a higher level of protection than what's out there today. So that was, that was kind of our, our goal coming out of, of the direction from Monday.
Ken, can I make a comment?
Yes, please, Mark.
Okay, I, going back to the finance, and Kirk kind of glossed over this when he was doing an overview. But at the Monday night meeting, our treasurer, Pete, provided us a diligent capital improvement master list overview. I don't know if any of you have that close by. But if you zero in on our local roads, which is devoted in budget, that, that generates about more, you know, more or less $300,000 a year. For fiscal year that we're currently in, we've, I don't think we've had a lot of expenses because we're mostly looking at North Park Street and that's been put off. So not to say want to spend all that, but I, I don't think our discussion should zero in right now on dollar cost. I mean, I think we all know $20,000 isn't going to hack it. It's really not going to do a whole lot. Maybe 40, maybe 50, maybe 60 or more. But I just wanted to point that out. And Kirk can chime in and say if I'm, you know, way off base on that. But I've got to think there's a, I just don't think with what we're talking about, we should be, until we zero in on specific projects and then allocate a cost for those projects, we should be overly concerned about the dollar amount. Ultimately, yes, but I think at, at this stage, not.
I agree. I guess that's where I was coming from in terms of looking at the finance. Kirk, you, you have a thought on that?
Well, I mean, that's what I was kind of, I think what Mark was trying to say is you, is go through and rank the projects that you think are important. And then from there, let's go through and then, I mean, I guess I look at the first part is figure out which projects are important rather than how much money do you have to spend on the project? Because I can tell you right now, you could, you could do every one of those projects with the most expensive route and you have the money to do it. That might not be the best use of your resources. But if you go into it with, let's go into it with a certain amount of money, you're probably not going to rank the projects. Number one project and number two might not be the most important because you're doing it based on cost. So I was, with this tool that Marsha put together, I was thinking that you go through first, identify which projects have the most need and then evaluate the cost. So.
Okay, well, we have a list of weighted, weighted point totals. And if I look at that list, Marsha, you want to take us there?
Yeah, well, yeah, if we're, if we're looking at the, the table where you're just sorting by the, the points, and that's what Chris had mentioned. And Mark had said, okay, well, I mean, I can just point out if, if you're going to allocate 60,000, you, the, the line would end up here, you know, you could fund, again, that these costs are correct. I mean, that, that would probably take another look, but you could fund down to City Marina South End of Butler and you're at 61,2. So.
Yeah, I think our, our first shot at this ought to be, is this the, is this the order? Do we agree that this is the order of importance of these projects? I think we've already agreed that the Water Lucy Street intersection topped the list. In fact, we allocated resources to address that. But then we go down the list, is, is that list in correct order that we would want to fund? Jane?
I have a problem with the Wicks Park restroom. I think that, that's going to be a bigger project when we look at, I know we have $100,000 from Dave Ballas and Jim Solomon to reconstruct something at that park. So to look at that bathroom, I just don't see that as a, as a high priority. You can replace it with a, with a porta potty for the time being if needed. And, you know, we still don't know, we don't know what we don't know. We don't know when people are going to come to town. We don't know how we're going to open the town yet. I think that's just not nearly the priority that the South End of Butler Street should be. I, I think that should be a real low priority because we're thinking about rebuilding it anyway. So. And thanks, Marsha. This is great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. This is Garn. So I'm going to take us to the second tab, kind of sticking to the data. So the second tab is council average. And if you look up there, we've said as a council, kind of what we see are, so yeah, if you look at that red tab, line number 19. So we have said what, we've, we have said what are the most important things and the priority that we feel as a group. So we have an average of 125. Our business is affected. That's the highest. And is traffic affected? Those two are the highest. Then is visitor public health safety affected? And then are residents affected? And then it drops down below 100 to the others. And so we have said as a council, what we think are the most, what are the priorities? And, and Marsha has assigned that weight according to what our responses are. So I would suggest that we keep that in mind. And basically what we've said is businesses, traffic, people's health and safety, and our residents. Marsha, would you agree or not?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, this is, this is the key, the, the most important part of the analysis is the discussion that goes on. And I will say, I mean, it's common, like what, once you get a ranking, I mean, some of these, okay, who's going to split hairs over whether a 14.9 is that much greater than a 14.6? So this is where, you know, the council's judgment and other experts, Scott and the engineering firm, where you can, you know, what we would say is like force project, you can just override. Because I always had a saying, models don't make decisions, people make decisions, right? Decision makers make decisions. But in general, that, you know, there, I would say there should be a good reason why you're going to move, you know, move a project up or down. And it may be that, hey, you know what? The, it, there is another solution for Wicks Park restroom and it's not going to cost $12,000. We have a $2,000 solution of putting a porta john in there. And so that could free up another 10 grand, you know, and potentially then fund the next one down. So.
You could do that on the fly here too, if people wanted you to do that.
Right.
That's what, that's what our is.
I don't.
Kirsty? Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think that the, I agree completely with the way they are weighted right now. As far as the Wicks Room, Park restroom, if we can get that solved and it's not water everywhere, I prefer that much more than the, the porta potties. We had a real problem with those just over the last couple of weeks. And again, we're going to re, repair it, replace it at some point, but that's not in the foreseeable future right now. So I say we stick with the 10,000 for that and, and put around the, the barricades and balloon that Mark suggested. And hopefully that will do the trick.
Yeah, I agree with that solution. I, I think putting porta potties in Wicks Park with all those events will seriously impact the, the image, if you will, of our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've had my little blue hand up for the last five minutes.
I'm sorry, Barry.
I'm going to lower it now. So I just, I guess we just got to jump in. So.
Well, honestly, the little blue hand up in the corner is easier to overlook. So just wave your hand, say, Mr. Mayor, and it's easier for me to recognize you.
All right, I'm not whining, I'm just saying. So anyway, you know, we, we have passed a motion to get busy on Water Street and Lucy Street. And we just got to cut John Moxie and, and our team together and put a number on that. And that falls into what Mark says, you know? It's like, okay, we threw something at it. We threw $20,000 or whatever, but that's not the number, you know? But we have taken action to get busy on that part. And I'd say that's got to happen like right now. So let's get John Moxie and our team together. Let's be able to put a number on that the next, next time we meet. And if we may have to meet in another special session to keep moving. And then I guess I pretty much agree with the, the ranking of that list that Marsha's got on. And again, I also want to thank her for all the work on that. I'm not so excited about the Wicks Park. I want to see a number on that, but the, in my mind, it's Water Street, Lucy, which we already got the ball rolling, I thought. Yep, Spear Street boat launch, that's contributing to the problem down there. So that's high. South End of Butler, many of us went down there in the last 24 hours and saw the Phelps family out there going, oh, God, the sandbags are working today. But, you know, so that really rose higher on my list after going down there in the last 24 hours. So, and then the rest is fine, fine. I did have a question. It says City Marina, South End of Butler. Is that really the, isn't that the south end of Griffith?
Yeah.
It is, Barry. It's, it was just, yeah, it's just labeled, the Marina part should be out of there. It's really, it's the South End of Butler.
Well, what about?
It's the Butler Street end.
Okay, so, but what, City Marina would be the south end of?
Griffith.
Like Coffin Park.
You have Coffin Park and Griffith Street, or where we have some boat slips, correct?
Right. So, and I, you know, it's, it's, it's bad down there everywhere, but I don't have a big problem with that. But, so that's, I guess my comment, and I'll mute out of this one. But let's get, let's get rank, you know, going on this Water Street and Lucy. We've approved it.
Now, Ken, if I may, in the pack, in the packet, there was a memo from John Moxie that was dated. I'm going to do a quick, I'm going to jump here and do a quick screen share. So again. So this was the memo that John Moxie came up with after he reviewed the Edgewater report. So he kind of laid out his, you know, recommendations for each of those projects. So if the council wanted to, you know, based on your ranking that Ms. Casper put together, you could say, okay, we're going to, you know, go for the top four or top three, whatever it may be. And within that, John has kind of identified what he would recommend from the Edgewater analysis. So you got a, you got a lot of pretty good information that you could really just pretty much, what the staff really needs right now is just from council is which of those areas, not necessarily the, the, you know, if you want to go with the engineer's recommendation, but which areas do you want the staff to work on? And then we can start executing those. But we need to know, do you want to do all of them? Or do you want to do four of them or two of them or whatever it may be? So that's really what, what, what we need as staff.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I looked through both the Johns as well as Edgewater. And if you look at the recommendations made on both of those and not go to the next step, which is the 100,000 on up, roughly, we could do all of them except the, the three bottom, which to me are, are not that high priority, the two Marina parts and the, the, I think just those two comes in right around $60,000 with engineering and construction. So I'm going to just throw out 60,000.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing from Barry, he favored the Water Lucy Street intersection, Spear Street boat launch, and the Wicks Park restroom. And number five, number two, the South End of Butler. Chris, you're saying that the one that you least favor would be the two Marinas?
Right.
Are we, are we kind of heading down that road of set needs and priorities?
I agree.
I agree. Two Marinas are very low on my list.
Mine too. This is Garn.
Yeah. Mark, my turn?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I, I agree with the exception of this. I do think that we should seriously look at putting dock risers on the docks at Griffith and at, and at the Spear Street launch ramp. One, their liability issue, as the water comes. One, they're a liability issue as the water comes up. And two, no offense to our, our lovely engineers, we don't engineer, need engineers to build risers with two by twelves and four by six cross, you know, decking. That also would open up the Griffith Street docks to more use as transient boating and, and generate the income that we lost last year will pay for the construction of those docks themselves and probably still put another thousand bucks in our pocket. That should be just a general fund expense. I don't think it should be part of this project, but I just want to point that out. Again, we can take anything on that list that ends in a street and tap our voted road mileage for that, partially or totally. So just, just want to point that out. And Kurt, one other thing, could you clarify something? In a very general sense, you and I just briefly discussed on that about the Francis Street, Street End? I think you know where I'm coming from on that.
Yeah, the Francis Street End, that, you know, that's a street end that we actually license out. So we have some different criteria with the person that we license that to. So that one may fall under a different repair process. So because it's a street end, we have, we have a street end license agreement that we use and, and there's a relationship with the city and the person that licenses that, or anyone that licenses the street and that, there's a funding share. So that one is probably, would be a low priority on this particular list right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, Barry.
You know, I don't see it in this screenshot, but Spear Street. You know, I'm trying to go from memory. There it is. I think it was going to HESCO that to keep it out during high water events or not?
Yes.
Okay, so are those HESCOs easy to move when things are okay? And then that, Mark says, yeah, get the risers on there so people can use it. But if we're going to shut that thing down altogether, because you just can't move HESCOs every other day, then I, you know, I, I don't understand that part.
John?
Yeah, they, the Edgewater report kind of had two options. And, and they revolved around that very issue, whether you put that in as a quote unquote permanent barrier, or whether you made it more of the, you know, you would put it in if there was rain or wind in the forecast. So that, that would be direction we'd need from council on how we actually attack that one, whether, whether it's, it's, you know, doable to close that down or whether we need to accommodate having it open and closed.
Yeah, but it, what's practical, though? I mean, is it practical to keep opening and closing it? Can our staff handle that? Or you just got to make up your mind, you're going to close it? Or you're going to, you know, leave it open?
Yeah, it's, it's not something I'd want to have staff do every day. But the, the nice part about the HESCO barriers is, is you can, you know, it's, it's much less labor to manipulate than, than individual sandbags. So with, with, you know, the backhoe or something like that, they could lift up a larger unit. The, the units, the, the one of the, they've got a lot of different products, but one of the units is, you know, fifteen feet long by three foot by three foot cross section. So instead of lifting up, you know, a hundred sandbags and, and moving them around, you're, you're basically taking the equipment and doing that once.
Okay, so our equipment could handle that fifteen foot wide thing. And then Scott Herbert, how, how do you guys feel about doing that, you know?
Scott?
Yeah, thanks for that consideration. We've got a lot, usually we have a lot of demands throughout the summer and the tourist season. This year is really no exception with wanting to be turnkey and ready. I'm not sure, without using them and getting the experience of it, the way I understand the HESCO barriers is that you'd have to, you can't just pick it up with all the sand and at the bottom would fall out. So that you, you'd have to completely reconstruct them every single time you install them and uninstall them. I don't see how that's, personally, I don't see how that's a great use of our time. But, you know, if we're told to, we'll do it.
And that's kind of what I was thinking, you know, you know, do we have the resources to do that? And it's not that easy to do. So I'm leaning towards, we got to shut that thing down because it contributes to all the problems down at Water and Lucy.
I second that. This is Garn.
I agree with that as well.
Is there a way to help with the kayak launching? Which, if we shut it down completely, is there a way to come in on the side with a ramp over it or something? Or would it completely limit, limit the kayak launching from there?
I don't know. I mean, you don't have to have a ramp to limit, to, to launch kayaks. You can, if you can step into somewhere into the water and take your kayak, you can get in pretty easy.
Except you'd have to go over a HESCO barrier to get there. You know, maybe this year, everybody's got to go to Schultz Park to put in their, their kayaks.
Sure.
I agree with you, Barry. I, I think those, those ramps are just, I mean, those boat launches are just, they're water ramps to flood the downtown. And I, I think we have to make a decision, either we shut them down or not. And I think there's just too much damage to keep them open. And people can use other, they can use Schultz.
Jane Heatherhand up first.
I think people need to know what to expect. So if you're going to close the Spear Street boat launch, then close it. Not, well, is it open today? Is it not open today? Do I go someplace else? I think it's better just to close it. And there are other places you can launch a kayak. You can launch it. I think at Wade's Bayou, I think you can launch at Schultz Park, you can launch next to the Red Dock. So there's plenty of places to launch kayaks. Or you can just put it in the water. I mean, it's not that difficult. So I think we should just close it.
I could have a motion ready for Monday on that one.
I, I, I think we should. I agree. Chris agrees.
Yep.
What other, one other comment on the launch ramp? I'd probably be one of the last ones to want to shut down the launch ramp. Two, one thing, Kirk, I, I know that the DNR's got some vested interest in that launch ramp, and I don't know if we'd have to clear, you know, clear that with them because they actually funded the construction of it originally in the post recent reconstruction we did, just, just a comment. But sometimes, you know how they, they act sometimes. So just a point there. And two, with the potential of eliminating parking in the downtown area for this summer for, because of the social separation and giving up parking, the own, you know, by closing it, you're going to eliminate boat, boat trailers, which really are two spaces for, for one. So you would alleviate or at least increase some additional parking in that area without the launching ramp closed. So those two comments, it's, I could go either way. Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with closing it.
Thanks. Okay, here's that, we're all on the same wavelength here. So let me recap. We were saying that the highest priorities for us are Water Street, Lucy Street, then Spear Street, then South, excuse me, South End of Butler Street and the Wick's restroom, those four. And then the, the two Marinas are, are the two least priorities. That leaves the street ends of Mason Street and St. Francis kind of in the middle. How do we feel about yea or nay on those? Barry?
Kirk gave a good explanation on the Francis Street, that there's some work, there's some talking and work to be done with the lease holders on that. And Mason Street, that's next to the Coral Gables, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
There's no seawall there. You know, I mean, that's going to be a, to fix that's an expensive, expensive thing. And you know, I don't see any win on that one at this point.
I don't either.
Me neither. It's Garn.
Okay, so I didn't get a clear picture about St. Francis Street. Kirk, is it, what was the issue with that?
Well, Francis Street is actually part of a street end license. So street end license has some details, all the street end licenses do, not just Francis Street. They have some details in there about when there needs to be repair and, and, and work done to those. So I'm not saying that any, nothing's going to get done there, but we need to, we need to work with the licensor right now. Licensee, yeah, licensor. So I, I think that one is, should be probably just removed for, removed off of this list for consideration at this time.
Okay, so then we have our top four.
Can I ask a question? Is Francis, is Francis Street, is that a, a big source of flooding of water coming in? Or is it more the boat launches?
Boat launch.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty localized there, Holly. The water does come up.
And then the only other comment I want to make, just kind of big picture, is that the weather that we've experienced in the last forty-eight hours is a fairly minor event. So we didn't really have the wind and we don't have the, the water heights that we're going to have in a month or two. So I just think we really have to keep that in mind. And I appreciate that Barry keeps prodding us to get more done. And I would love to see us move Water Street and Spear Street boat launch quick, quickly. That's all I would say.
Okay, thanks. I, I would point out that one of my friends who's an expert on, on Lake Michigan hydraulics, I gave him the same thing, that I was happy that all this water came from rainfall and not from the wind pushing it in. And he said, that's not true. That there was a huge windstorm on Northern Lake Michigan that was pushing water to the south. And so this is a sage, as well as the, the rainfall we had. So it's pretty major. Okay, so we picked four high priorities. And we'll put something together at the, at the next council meeting to, to move those along, to approve those and fund them. Is this where we're coming out on this?
I gotta, I gotta say something around that. Our next council meeting isn't until what? Sometime in May, maybe? Or May, what? Okay, this is a published meeting. We can make a motion tonight and take action.
Yes.
I agree.
Yes, I had it, I had it listed as a, you'll see on the agenda, it's a discussion and action item. So it's, you can definitely make a motion. And really what, what would be good for the staff, you just tell us or just basically make a motion to give us the priorities. You don't have to go into a great detail on them. Just tell us that you want to address those.
Mr. Mayor? I moved that, or make a motion that we move on the top four priorities that we've discussed and direct staff and the engineers to go ASAP.
I second that. Yeah, go for it.
Who got in there first? Mark?
Mark, yep.
Okay, move with Chris second by Mark to move forward with the top priorities that have been identified.
Mr. Mayor, could you, Mr. Mayor, could you identify the top priorities, though, so that we have them clearly? Just, just.
Yes, they are the Water Street, Lucy Street intersection, the Spear Street and boat launch, the south end of Butler Street, and the Wick's Park restroom.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So those are all tied for number one. There's, you know, they're not really one, two, three, four anymore. They're all one.
Yeah, the, the motion is to authorize doing all four.
Right, so, you know, we should be a few days ahead on the Water and Lucy because we authorized that already. But now this nails it and says, these are the four number ones. And our good friend John Moxie and Scott Herbert and Edgewater, wherever they can help. Let's get busy.
I agree.
Right.
There's a.
Oh, Holly?
Yeah, could I please, Mayor? I was talking to Scott earlier today, and there's a piece of equipment that, that he was telling me about that's a Quick Fill Sandbagger machine. It's forty-six hundred dollars. It operates with two people. And it goes, it looks like it goes in the back of a pickup truck. And I thought, and he thought that might be a great thing for the city to have, just to quickly fill bags. And it's something that we could offer to help people in the community with if they needed it. So I'd like to throw that out there.
I think that's a great idea, Holly. In fact, I talked to Chief Janik today about that, and, and he suggested the same thing. If we had one in the community, it would be well used. Barry?
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm trying not to take too much of my turn, but clarifying the Spear Street boat launch, I'm hearing our direction is you're just, we're just closing it. And we should get the engineering and the cost to close that thing.
I think we agree that we would.
Okay, just want to make sure John Moxie and Mr. Becken might have a, some wisdom on that or what?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. Holly, can, Holly, can you recap, please, how much we were talking about for the sand filler that Scott needs?
It's called a, a Quick Fill Sandbagger. Scott can send everybody the link. There's a YouTube link for the piece of equipment. Trying to find it.
How much, how much did?
It's forty-six hundred dollars. It's called Quick Fill Sandbagger. And it goes in the back of a pickup truck. And, and Scott, Scott, you know what? Why, Scott's on this call. It's, I don't know why I'm trying to explain this. Scott, take it away.
Thanks, Holly. Yeah, just, just for consideration, you know, a lot of people are into the sandbags. So if, if, if it was beneficial to set up some sort of a station, whether it be at the Public Works Garage in the backyard or somewhere that we could stage it, the unit is, is pretty modular. It can be installed in the back of a pickup truck. And so it's, it can become mobile, but it also is sold with some freestanding legs. So it could just be something that we don't need, you know, can set up a site. You know, if, if staff was available, I see it going a couple ways. We could stage it next to a loading ramp that we could make pretty easily. And, you know, staff, or I'm sorry, people that wanted to use it could load up the hopper that's on top of it. Or if staff was available, we could load up the, the top portion of this, this machine with our tractors. But also the, a nice feature about it is that it, there's no mechanical components. There are, there are mechanical components, but there's no engine or anything like that. It's simply a hopper, a couple levers, and it dispenses the same amount of sand every single time into the bag. So for consideration, that's, that's it right there.
Mr. Mayor?
What? In order, this sand machine is a cool idea. It has nothing to do with the motion that's on the floor. So we should move to and get the motion covered. And then let's talk about Quick Fill Sandbaggers for the rest of the day.
Okay, Garn?
Yep, nope, that's fine. I'll wait to ask my question once we vote on this motion.
All right, any other discussion on this motion? Chris?
That was my point.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
I did not put down whether we were looking at our staff doing the, the moving around, or we're looking at a contractor moving around. Difference, they had two different points. Personally, I feel that if there's a third party out there, we can get to do that. I think that would be best. If, if it's such a, an event that, that we're going to have to move things, the staff is going to be busy elsewhere.
We'll get, I'm not, I follow what you're talking about moving.
There was besides the Water Street, or besides the Spear Street launch, there was.
We're not moving that. We're shutting that down.
No, I know. But there was another one. I thought where the, the staff had to do something.
Well, that would come from Moxie's engineering final.
Well, actually, Barry, it was part of Edgewater, and I'm blanking here right now where, where it was. But there were several things that they cost twelve, twelve moves.
No, Wick's Park restroom facilities required a, or that had a HESCO and a pump solution. And I also believe the Water Street, Lucy Street.
Yes, Water Street, Lucy Street. There were three things that they gave an estimate of having to come out twelve times. And it was so many thousands for our staff to do it, so many thousands to hire a contractor. I personally feel.
I think that was the Wick's Park restroom, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Mayor?
One at a time. Garn Heatherhand up first.
All right.
Yeah, sorry, along those lines. Again, we have Scott on the phone who can answer that question for us, whether his staff can handle the load where Edgewater suggested, you know, gave the options between staff and a contractor. Scott?
Yeah, I, I think.
Yeah, I, um, I think, I think the answer to that is really going to depend on what John and I can come up with, uh, during tomorrow and, and the exact solutions that John is, is talking about, uh, or will be coming up for us. So I, I don't know that I have a great answer for that at this time.
Okay, thanks.
As a follow-up, Ken?
Mark?
Yeah, I, there was no price or not to exceed dollar amount put into the motion. And I think that's a good idea, because what we need is to have Scott and Moxie and Edgewater and Kirk put together the final plan. And if we, a week from today, we have to have a special meeting to approve it, we can do so. Kirk then knows that, you know, where the funds can come from and everything like this. And so I, I, I just think that we're going to have to have one more meeting to finally approve the projects, because they exceed, uh, Kirk's personal amount of money that he can authorize. Unless we just tell Kirk, he's got seventy-five thousand dollars to work with, go for it. But I think there are some issues that we may want to know on the final details. So I mean, those are my comments. Hey, if, if, once they get it together, get the final plan together, and they have to hire outside contractors, great. What's the cost and we can approve it?
Barry?
Uh, yeah, I agree. And we can, uh, amend the motion, uh, with a contingency, uh, final approval. And then we better get meeting pretty quick, as quick as John Moxie can, you know, and, uh, come up with a dollar amount. So we might amend that in a minute. But I also want to say, uh, why does our guys have to go down to Water and Lucy every time it floods? Isn't there going to be a system that goes, it's got a float switch and it kicks on when it needs to be on?
Okay, well, let's stick to the motion. Chris, you had your hand up?
I did, uh, and I'd be more than happy to have a friendly amendment if we want to put a dollar amount in there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think at this time, really, I don't think we need to get so detailed. But the staff, what we really need is exactly what the council just said. You said, these are the priority projects and we're going to start implementing those. The same thing that you did on Monday with, um, Lucy and Spear Street. You gave us the, the marching orders. We're still have to meet with John Moxie, with, with myself and Scott. And we got to come together with a plan that's going to work. If that plan comes back and it's going to be, the cost is going to be much higher than we anticipated. I'm going to have to come back to council anyways. But well, we have everything we need right now to start implementing and moving forward. That's, we're, we're good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Then we'll take a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Yeah.
Leo?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
For Plank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. The motion passes. Uh, what I'd like to do at this point, rather than, uh, talk about other items of discussion first, uh, let me move public comment, to have public comments next, because some of our, um, audience may wish to make a comment on, uh, this, uh, this issue tonight. And Eric, I knew that you would, you have your hand up first.
I get it.
Eric?
Okay.
All right, I think, I think, I think you can all hear me now. I just wanted to kind of share with the group, um, selfishly, uh, my personal experience. And I know there's, there's a whole lot more, uh, to, to the town than our little world that I live in. We spent, uh, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and about five weeks in proper mitigation after the flood the night before Thanksgiving. And the reality is, not just is that a tremendous amount of money, uh, but it's a tremendous amount of time. On top of that, to, after doing that, you know, cutting everything, drying everything, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, the electric bill alone was thirty-five hundred dollars, just from the amount of dryers that were in there. The upside is, boy, it happened when we were closed, uh, so we didn't lose any business. You know, and then on top of that, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to rebuild. And, uh, I, I think we chose some really good products, knowing that we're going to flood again, and probably again and again and again. But I can tell you, uh, that, you know, twenty thousand dollars, I, I've spent in six thousand square feet and, and I'm not even close to done with what I need to try to protect, uh, our, our building and the five businesses in it. And talking with Mr. Mayor a little bit earlier today, I think what makes it very hard for a group to make a decision is there's no smoking gun. There's no one solution where you can say, jeez, if we spend this much, we're going to stay this dry. It, it makes it very hard, but the, the reality is, if, if, and I'm happy to hear that maybe this was caused by some wind today as well. But what we took on today in comparison to the night before Thanksgiving, when I think the, the waves were fourteen feet and the winds were pushing fifty miles an hour, if that happens again, we'll certainly be closed for, for this season. And, and candidly, I don't know that we'll recover from it. Now, I don't know the position that everyone else is in and how they mitigate the damage and make sure the black mold is gone and all the horrible stuff that comes from water. But I urge you all to look at, uh, sort of the ROI to the town on the investment versus what the loss would be with those businesses gone. And, and that's all I really wanted to say. I appreciate everyone taking the, giving me the opportunity to share with, with you all the, the really dire straits that, that we'll be in if, if we take on another, you know, uh, flood like we did the night before Thanksgiving. It will be devastating. So.
Those are good words.
Can I have the name of the gentleman, please, that just spoke?
Uh, my name is Eric Cheaton.
Mermaid Bar and Grill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Monica, okay, Mark Ludwig, who's raising his hand.
Good evening, neighbors. Um, I'm Mark Ludwig, I've worked in your town at the Southerner for a few years and, uh, visited there for about fifteen years. And I'm currently one of your candidates for drain commissioner for Allegheny County in the coming November election. And, uh, it's quite inspiring to watch all of you try to, uh, deal with this problem. But to be quite frank with you, I think what you are doing is trying to put, uh, a, a patch on, uh, a very leaky situation. And the patches are going to bump up against the limits of, uh, are going to bump up against limits very quickly. I think quite frankly, you need your drain commissioner, whether it's me or whether it's the incumbent, to take a strong interest in controlling your river mouth. And I know that that's an incredibly big proposition. But it is something that is done on the east side of the state. And I would very much recommend you talk to some people on the east side, particularly where Saginaw Bay, uh, gives you a three-foot storm surge currently, uh, when it blows down from the north. And they, I know in Bay County alone, they've got over forty-five different flat gates controlling these storm surges at the mouths where, where those little creeks and what major rivers are, are contacting the waters. This is not a problem which can be solved by Sawgatuck. This is not a problem which frankly can be solved by any of us working alone. This is a problem frankly of climate change. And I know, uh, you've got a city engineer on there. And having talked to engineers, they are, they, they know we're in uncharted territory, but they still use the same levels, the same numbers that they've used for decades. I, I would encourage you as political leaders, as people who are leaders in your community, to continue talking about this as the new normal. We are going to face very high water levels going forward if the climate models are correct. It's going to continue rising. We're going to face stronger winds if the climate models are correct. And whether it's coming from the north or it's coming from the west, it's bad news for us either way. And frankly, uh, the drain commissioner, because of the structure of the drain commission law in this state, has much more financial, uh, breathing room than any of you have the authority to, to move forward with. The drain commissioner can basically send out bills to, to do massive projects if necessary. And it's relatively straightforward to get processed through the drain commissioner's office. And frankly, if you want somebody to go wrestle with the feds, your county drain commissioner is the one you want at the tip of the spear on that project. So, uh, you know, I'd encourage you to take this seriously, uh, and, and to be ready for more and for that water to just keep getting higher, because I do not see it coming down, uh, anytime soon and maybe ever. And, and that's just the reality we're in right now. And, you know, I hate to kind of pour cold water on your projects, because I think they're important for the short run. But the long-term solution is there at the river mouth. And that's really long-term where you got to be looking.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else wish to make a comment? You'll have to press your, uh, your raised hand thing, because a lot of people are not pictured here. So I can't tell if you want to speak or not by looking at a picture. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to other items of discussion. Does anybody on council wish to raise an item for discussion? Chris?
Um, one thing I wanted to say is it's very hard to understand why we can't get an emergency declaration and get funding for this. If you go downtown, uh, it, the, most of the water is level with the river. And, um, I know Scott Corbin has looked into this, but I, I would really like to at least have more information about why we as county couldn't get it. I looked back on the records, twenty seventeen, there were several counties that got flooding. Maybe it was way, way worse. But we've got some pretty phenomenal flooding here that's causing a lot of damage. And I'd like to find out exactly why or what we have to do to move forward with a, uh, emergency declaration.
Kirk, were you, you look like you were going to make a comment.
No, I could, I was going to reach out to Mr. Corbin and I'll get some information for you.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Barry?
Yes.
Garnet was before me.
Yeah, thanks Barry. Um, actually, I want to take us back to our conversation. And I'd like to move that we, the city, uh, purchased a Quick Fill Sandbagger in the amount of forty-six hundred dollars to support our DPW department. That's my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Holly? Okay, move by Garnet, seconded by Holly, uh, to acquire the sandbagger discussion. Barry?
Great idea, but there's other communities that could actually use that. Uh, and I think that would be a perfect candidate for a collaborative purchase, uh, for us communities that have lake shore and sandbag needs. I would think the people in Douglas would be interested in that. I would think the township would be interested to, uh, and even Ganges Township and, you know, people on the lake shore. I, I would, I would, I think it's a great idea. If I vote against it, it's more because I think it would be a great share for everybody and I would vote to share the cost with a, uh, the other communities.
Well, I was thinking along the same lines, but not exactly. You know, rather than line up, uh, take two months to line up a bunch of communities, we could, we could rent it. East Shore Harbor would willingly pay a rental fee to, you know, to the city, uh, to compensate for that. So I'd go that way.
That's interesting.
Okay, any other discussion? Then we'll vote on the motion, it's a roll call.
Louis?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
For Plank?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes, motion's passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Garnet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Any other, uh, excuse me, items for discussion you'd wish to bring up? Barry?
Um, Kirk, and with the mayor's permission and the council's assent, uh, I think we should get Dean Capiga, uh, involved to, uh, follow up on Mark Ludwig's, uh, comments about the drain commissioner. Drain commissioners never even come across our radar on this whole deal, all these years. And if that kind of, uh, re, access and resource is available, uh, we're the guys that need to know. So, uh, through channels, through Dean, it'd be nice to have the drain commissioner come and speak at one of our meetings as a guest speaker to say, what can he do?
Sure.
I second that, yeah.
I don't even know who he is, so that'd be great.
I think it's a she, isn't it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Your drain commissioner is Denise Medema?
Oh.
Okay. Any other items for discussion? Uh, then we'll move to council comments. Uh, let's see, where are we? That would be first, uh, would be Holly.
Um, I just would hope that we, um, move quickly as we can and, uh, utilize Scott as much as possible. I feel like DPW has figured out a way to work under pandemic conditions. Um, and it's a good way to keep costs down. Um, but I just want to, um, commend everybody's community spirit. And, um, I think if we just keep helping each other, we'll just, you know, do what we can and face what we have to face.
Okay, Barry?
Uh, me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, we really need to get this meeting, next meeting rolling, uh, per Mark's thing. But we can't really move ahead until John Moxie and our engineers and, uh, maybe Edgewater, whoever's going to be involved in it, uh, come up some costs, so we have something to put in the motion. And I guess Kirk's going to have to keep cracking the whip and then let the mayor know so that we can get that meeting scheduled as soon as we get the numbers.
Thanks, Mark?
Oh, good, good meeting, thank you.
Okay, um, Jane?
Um, John, do you have any idea how long this is going to take to get some numbers and get?
Yeah, we've, we've got, got a lot of good information from the work we've done and Edgewater has done. So it's really just kind of putting the pieces together, I think. So I'm, I'm hoping next week we can, we can have some estimates. I, I guess I'll caution all of you that this, this isn't a normal project, quote unquote. So the, the costs are going to be a little bit shot in the dark based on, you know, material costs that we can get our hands on. And, um, you know, trying to estimate some hours for the DPW, things like that. But we'll do our best to try and give you some realistic conservative numbers.
So will we have to hire some contractors and is that going to be an issue?
I could see, and, and Scott, correct me if, if I speak out of turn, but I could see us wanting to maybe bring in an electrical contractor, um, because we are a little bit limited on the power side, um, just working off of extension cords. So that could be a contractor involved. Another one might be a contractor come in and, and plug some, um, sewer. Mark had a really good idea about, you know, where we do have isolated catch basins. If we can plug some sewers and kind of consolidate where we need to focus our efforts, that would be, uh, potentially a contractor involved in that. Uh, so there, there may be some, but I don't, I don't see bringing in a, a large general contractor to do, you know, big pieces of the work necessarily.
Oh, yeah, please take care of those extension cords, that, that's horrible.
Garnet?
Yeah, um, thank you so, I'm glad we've made this decision. And I, uh, want to extend the thank you to Marcia again for all of her work, this is wonderful. Uh, I, I do have on my calendar for next Thursday, our regularly scheduled city council workshop. Uh, this was a special city council workshop. So we, we are back together again next Thursday unless that calendar's changed. That's a week. And I know that Scott and John and I think it's John are meeting tomorrow. So I would anticipate that we could probably have some information by then. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Uh, I just want to say thank you again to Marcia. It's amazing the talent that we have, that just out of the blue, somebody with that expertise developed this spreadsheet for us. Really tickled John, he loved it. The other thing that I've been listening to are some of the webinars on, um, the economy as well as ways to get funding through the corona virus relief fund. There are several areas out there. And I think it would be who was to look a little bit into possibly having someone that is Scott background and grant writing, uh, to take a look at some of that. Thank you.
Good, okay. Um, I think I called on everybody, right? Okay, well, I too would like to thank Marcia for that excellent work. I mean, it really got us to a very, very good conclusion. And I certainly appreciate that, yep. And I thank all of our guests who, who tuned in tonight. Uh, we appreciate your interest and your input. And thank council for, uh, a good meeting. So we'll see each other for sure next Thursday and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Holly? Yep, okay. Any discussion on adjourning, hearing none? This is a roll call vote.
For Plank? Leo? Leo?
She muted.
I'm muted. Yes. Thank you. Johnson?
Uh, yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. We're adjourned. Thank you again.
Thank you.